Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wattsburg Area School District, where we are student-centered and future-focused for a world-class education. The board work session of May 13th, 2024 is now in called order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Burlingham.
Here.
Mrs. Heather.
Here.
Excuse me. Heatherington.
With the hood on.
Here and cold.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Morve.
Here.
Dr. Pushcheck.
Here.
Mr. Williams. Mr. Young.
Present.
Mr. Blazer.
Present. Thank you. Please note, the board met in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to review our annual safety and security plan. The Chair recognizes Superintendent Schools, Dr. Ken Berlin for school reports. Will we have school reports next week? Dr. Berlin.
I'm not sure if we're going to have a school report this close to the end of the year. If we do, I will let you know.
All right. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is guest and citizen comments. I will call you up one at a time. Please, prior to your comments, please state your name and your miss palady in which you reside. Please welcome Mr. William Cosby.
Good evening. My name is Will Cosby. I actually live in Mill Creek, but I work at the high school and the middle school. Before I get to my primary point, I just, I want to thank you all for your support of the band program here. It's been a bit of a crazy year for my family to move all the way from West Virginia, and it's, the Walker community and the arts community has done nothing but support it. And this board has been hugely financially supported. I just, I want to take a second to thank you for that before I get to my primary point. So, I'm here this evening because I have a request to make. So, a little bit of back history. About two months ago, I was reached out to by Drum Corps, especially Drum Corps International. If you're unaware of what that program is, the easiest way to say is it's basically like a professional-level marching band where kids aged 14 to 21 are able to audition. And then if they make it in, they pay to go travel around the country competing against other world-class marching bands, who's drum corps, and they spend their whole summer doing that. Well, I've heard that process, they need schools to stay in and practice that as they travel around the country. So, they were reaching out to myself and other schools in the area, asking if we might be willing to host them. So, at that point, I reached out to Dr. Berlin and had some conversations and started the process of exploring what this would look like. I reached out to Mrs. Bendig and asked what the cost would be, because they would need a quote before they could be able to say, I can say yes or no, and they would want that information. So, with the numbers, with them staying from about eight in the morning on a Sunday until about three in the afternoon on Monday, staying the night with a certain number of classrooms and different things that they would need, including use of the football field. As a side note, I did run this. This is at the same time my football would be going. I have spoken with Coach Corin. We have a great understanding of how this would work, so this would in no way get in the way of the football team. He's already in agreement that it's early enough, we would basically, he was in agreement, he would start his practice for that day outside on the field after the drum corps had left at about three. So, I don't want anybody to think we would in no way displace the football team. He's great to work with, and we're already starting that conversation. But with all of the things that they might need, and we know we need a couple less, but the total for the drum corps to stay for basically a day and a half came out to be a little over $8,000. Judging by the, I, I would, my request is that we would be able to lower that down. I asked the drum corps, once I could get them that number, what kind of standard amount they pay most places is, and it tends to be about $1,500 a day. And so, my request is we might be able to amend that total to allow them, and for this reason, not just so that we can host them and serve that, but I think it would be a great opportunity for the students here, as well as the community. My hope is, once we can, if we get somebody signed on to come here, we'll be able to advertise that to the community, because all rehearsals are open to the public. So, all day, people from the community could come and watch them sectionals, could have watched them do their craft, do this thing at a high level. Again, it's on a Sunday right before our band camp, so I'm not going to require it on our students, but I can offer that opportunity for them to come watch and walk around and see these incredible musicians that are all their age group, and see this incredible art form that they're doing. And then even the next day, I've already been in conversations with the drum corps that we will probably be able to work out to where we get to kind of sit in on some of their practices, see how they do what they do. Be a great learning opportunity for our students, and just an incredible opportunity for the community to just come out and watch this activity that I think our community, in my experience, has great affinity for the marching band and the marching march.
Mr. Cosby, I just, I forgot to give you the heads-up before you started that you had three minutes. So, you used it, and you're, I think we have all the details. So, if we need anything else, Mr. Berlin can certainly gather that from you and bring it to the board. So, thank you for your comments tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Cosby.
Next up is Aaron Chilcot.
Sure, sure. We'll wait till you're ready, but once again, you have three minutes.
My name is Aaron Chilcot, and I am from, right down on Jones Road here, locally. I'm out here, it's my first time here. Not been a part of the community like I'd like to be. That's a new thing for me. So, I want to be involved more. And this could be the wrong stage for this, so I apologize if I'm asking in the wrong atmosphere or environment. I didn't even know where to go with my questions, and so, and I apologize for that if I'm wrong or this is the wrong place for that, and you can just tell me that, that's all right. But we had been made aware of a situation that had been going on at the school. I have four little boys, and I was very interested in the resolution process or what had taken place with the restrooms, if you guys understand what I'm referring to. And so, my.
Restrooms?
Yeah, we had been, I had been under, if you can't hear me, I had been told there was an issue with the restrooms where a child was wanting to use the opposite-sex restrooms. We were wanting to know the resolution with all of my kids coming up. I've got, like I said, I've got, well, one's about to be born this week, three little boys. I was interested in what's going on. We're debating private school, and right now, we're leaning that way anyways. But I wanted to come here and ask, what was your long-term resolution? What's the plan going? Because this is going to be coming up over and over, if I can ask that here in this time and place. Or I could also write that in and get an answer from somebody, but I didn't, again, I apologize if it's the wrong media for that, but I wanted to ask that, okay? And that was my question.
And that's it? I just didn't want to cut you off too early. So, this is, the way public comments work at our, as our, all of our board meetings, just, you know, if you're not familiar, is we allow the public come in, and they comment on things we're going to vote on, that we're going to pass a resolution on. Tonight's meeting is work session, so we're just setting the agenda for next week anyway, so we don't vote on anything tonight. But we don't have a back-and-forth, and so that's often a misconception. People think, well, we can have a conversation, and it makes sense, so you'd be able to bring that to your elected officials. I think maybe the best would be for you to follow up with Mr. Berlin. We have your address here, but maybe before you leave, either you get his attention, you get his phone number, and I think he can give you a little more detail on the question you asked in specifics outside of this meeting, if that makes sense.
Yeah. How long does the meeting, I would say, hold for tonight?
It's not like timed, but I would say typically tonight would be half hour, 45 minutes.
If you have, if you want to email me or give me your phone number. Okay, it's, it is ken, K-E-N, dot berlin, B-E-R-L-I-N, at wattsburg dot O-R-G. And if, if you have trouble with that, you can always go to our website at wattsburg.org. Click on Administration, and you'll find my email right there. Am I fine? You can call me, too.
You're welcome. Next up, we have Caleb McClelland. Same, same issue, okay. And so, Mr. Berlin can maybe reach both of you through that. Thank you. And then Ryan signed up and didn't want to speak, correct? Okay. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next up, the Chair recognizes Dr. Ken Berlin for Superintendent's Report.
I don't have a report for this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Mrs. Vicky Bendig, the Business Administrator, for her financial report.
Thank you, Mr. President. For tonight, I have the Treasurers' Reports. These reports are as of April 30th, 2024. The General Fund Treasurers' Report, cash in those accounts totals $10,227,498.84. Capital Projects Fund has $386,301.74 as of the end of April. And the Cafeteria Fund has a total of $687,099.58 as of the end of April. Moving on to the Bill List, Exhibit A1, our checks already written. Those are checks that have been written since the last board meeting through this evening in the General Fund totaling $69,711.48. And Exhibit B1, Cafeteria Checks, those total $179.17. I also have the Seneca High School Activity Fund report. Amount in those accounts as of the end of April totals $89,442.98. I will have the rest of the reports ready for next week.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board from Miss Bendig regarding her reports?
Not a question, just a comment. My five short years on board, it's amazing to see our Cafeteria Fund so much larger than our Capital Funds Projects account. It's crazy, because that's not the way it was a short time ago. Hearing none, those items will be on our agenda next week for consideration. Thank you, Miss Bendig.
There are two items on the agenda under legal advisement for next week. LA1 is our appointment of a school district labor council for the 2024-25 fiscal year. Recommendation is to appoint the firm of McDowell Illeg with attorney Mark Uhara as our labor relations solicitor for the 2024-2025 fiscal year. And LA2, which is our appointment of our school district solicitor for the 2024-25 fiscal year, and the recommendation is to appoint the firm of Knox-McGlocklin-Gornell in Senate with attorney Jennifer Gornell as our school district solicitor for the 2024-2025 school year. Are there any questions or discussion on those two items under legal advisement? Hearing none, those items will be on our agenda next week for consideration. The Chair recognizes Dr. Andy Pushack for Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have six items at this time under Finance. Number one, F1, is the monthly budgetary transfers, budget to actual. F2 is the sponsor-to-sponsor agreement with the YMCA of Erie. F3, 4, 5 are standard appointments. Elected Treasurer, yours truly, and designated signatory for the following fiscal year. Designation of Northwest Savings Bank as our depository for the following fiscal year. Appoint Burckheimer Associates as the delinquent per capita tax collector for the fiscal year. And then F6 is to approve the Nutrition Group Food Services Agreement for the following school year. Six items under Finance for the board's consideration, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any questions or discussion on the items under Finance?
Mr. President, my rec, oops.
Mr. Morve.
Mr. President, my recollection was on the Food Services Agreement. That was an open bid process, if I remember right?
We did publish a request for proposal, yes.
And obviously, they were the best value for us going forward, and that's the recommendation of the administration.
It was evaluated by four administrators using a rubric, and the Nutrition Group was the best fit.
Fair enough. Just wanted to expose the process a little bit more.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mrs. Bendig, I just had a similar question about that point, F6. So, how many other bidders do we have?
One.
Okay. And when I see the option renew for four additional years, so, I thought I saw that in previous years, maybe I haven't, so that's just saying that we don't have to open bids again for, for, for five years, basically?
Correct. As long as we're happy and the Nutrition Group is happy, we can go through the renewal process as opposed to the open bid process.
And I remember a previous year when we renewed it, them giving us sort of like our, I can't, I can't remember if it was just an estimate, but basically like.
It's a guarantee.
Like guarantee, no more than a loss of or an actual income. That's, will we see that next week? Is that part of the agreement that we'll be awarding next week, or is that come later?
I can share that with you, yes. It was, it is sizable, and, but I do also want to remind you that the food service program is not to be making a profit. We're supposed to be operating right at budget and, but with the movement to Community Eligibility Program and the federal increase in per-meal subsidy that we receive, we're, we're having a very hard time spending the money that they're giving us. However, I will say that each building would like to have another combi oven. They're finding that they are super efficient, and they make great crispy fries for the kids. The kids rave about the french fries they get made out of the oven. So, we're looking at a new combi oven for every building, and the serving lines here at the elementary school are in really bad shape. Some of the steam pans are rusting. I, I don't, I hesitate to say rust, because they're stainless steel, but they are 30 years old. So, need to replace that, and I think she's getting quotes, and I think the quotes are going to be upwards of over $100,000 for that. So, we've got plans to spend it. So.
Good, good. Hearing no other question or discussions, those items will be on our agenda next week for consideration. The Chair recognizes Mr. Brian Young for Buildings and Grass.
Mr. President, I have three items to move to the agenda for next week. B1 being the utilization of school facilities for, excitingly, junior district band in April of 2025. The childcare agreement between YMCA and the Wattsburg Area School District for our in-house childcare program here at the Elementary Center. And the campus paving and concrete projects to allow direction to the administration for awarding those bids. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any questions or discussions on those items under Building and Grass? Hearing none, those will be on our agenda next week for consideration. Thank you, Mr. Young. The Chair recognizes Ms. Nicole Lee for Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. President. As usual, end of the year, I have a lot of things happening, so let's get started. I have 10 items, and they will include P1, ESS substitute additions as listed, P2, service substitute additions, P3, resignations as listed, P4, ESY appointments, P5, conference requests as listed, P6, summer school programs as listed, P7, kindergarten boot camp, P8, summer help appointments as listed, P9, appointments, the numerous ones that are listed there, and P10, tuition reimbursement.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or question on the 10 items under Personnel? Mrs. Heatherington.
I noticed that P9 has some empty spaces. Will those be filled by next meeting? Okay.
Yes, we've been interviewing, screening and interviewing. There's some performance interviews for finalists at the end of this week, so we're hoping to have those names for the agenda next week.
Hearing no other question or discussion, those items will be on our agenda next week. Thank you, Mrs. Lee. The Chair recognizes Ms. Brittany Burlingham for Policy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will have one item under Policy next week. PL1, which is the second reading of policies, to approve the second reading of the following policies as listed below, and that is all I currently have.
Thank you, Ms. Burlingham. Is there any question or discussion on those second readings of the policies under Policy? Hearing none, those items will be on our agenda next week for consideration. The Chair recognizes Mr. Steve Morve for Curriculum.
Mr. President, currently, I have five, four items on the agenda for next week's board meeting under curriculum. The first one is the, to approve the junior senior prom that just occurred this past weekend. The second item is Item C2, to approve the senior banquet. That will happen after our board meeting next week. Item C3, which would be the, approve the seniors to meet all the graduation requirements as listed, as well as then C4, which is the approval of four additional textbooks in the high school as listed as well. That would be all I have, Mr. President, currently.
Thank you. Is there any question or discussion on the four items under Curriculum? Hearing none, those items will be on our agenda next week for consideration. Thank you, Mr. Morve.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The Chair recognizes Mr. Jesse Williams for Technology.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams. The Chair recognizes Mr. Steve Morve for Transportation.
Mr. President, currently, under Transportation, there are, there is one item to approve the transportation requests so listed. That'll be on the agenda for next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or question on the one item under Transportation? Hearing none, that, those, that item will be on our agenda next week for consideration. Thank you, Mr. Morve. The Chair recognizes Ms. Leah Heatherington for Athletic and Extracurricular.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item, AE1, volunteer list, and that is to approve the two names listed on the agenda. That will be on.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions on the additions to volunteer list? Hearing none, that item will be on our agenda next week for consideration. There are three items on the agenda under miscellaneous for next week. M1, which is our Kidder Media Agreements, to approve the agreement between Kidder Media and the Wattsburg Area School District for our 2024-25 newsletter production as outlined. M2 is for the surplus items as outlined and attached. And then M3, which is the PSBA delegate to appoint, and we need to name a member, a board member, as a WASD delegate for our 2024 PSBA Assembly scheduled for November 2nd, 2024. Are there any questions or discussion on the three items under miscellaneous?
I wanted to share some information regarding the newsletter. I had informed the board last week that we were coming up on our annual renewal of this contract, and I wanted to bring to the attention the cost, you know, how many we're sending out, you know, what's the distribution range and that type of thing. So, the board was informed of those things, and then Mr. Morve had reached out and, and asked Mrs. Bendig and myself, are there other options? Perhaps the tech school could, could be a vehicle to print the newsletters? So, I responded to Mr. Morve that I'd get some information as I could today, and then just share that with you. You know, ultimately, this is a board decision for the newsletter. Just a little, just a little background, I had started this a little over 10 years ago, and this was really the gist of it, to inform the community about what we do here as a school. And I've said it to the board in different formats and forums before. We don't have a center, an epicenter, right? We, you know, we have these four townships and a borough, and there's no singular identity. So, there's, there's, there's not a good opportunity for common sharing or, you know, a summer event where everyone could see some things that students do. So, that's what the purpose behind the newsletter, first and foremost, is to inform residents, but also to, to give them some information on, on how, you know, their tax dollars are spent, because, you know, it is, it is a burden, and for some people, it's, it's a significant burden. So, that was why it was started, and the frequency, we, it was two times a year, and I was, I was writing it and laying it out. I was gathering ideas from people, pictures wherever I could get them, and that, it wasn't a bad way to get started, but we started getting more and more stories. People were, well, I want, we're doing good things here, so they want, they want to brag, as they should. So, then we expanded it to three additions, and then during COVID, we picked up some extra funds, and we started some outreach. And some of this was the result of research. Zip code saturation mailing, actually not that much more expensive than what we were doing, which was, I, I had created a roster of the, you know, 3,700 parcels in the district out of tax, digital tax collectors' records, and that was the mailing list we were using to make sure every resident got a copy. But it turned out that zip code saturation mailing, where you're not addressing a piece to every person, there was a trade-off in cost, and so, so we pushed the newsletter out into zip codes, so it's, it's beyond the district border modestly. And the, the idea there is, is outreach. You know, if we want people to move into the district, maybe if they see some of the things our kids do, it could help. So, that, so this is just a past, little snapshot, the past few years.
Ooh, magical.
Yeah, and moving it up in pages, that, of course, increased the cost. This is not just printing costs, though. So, we've developed a system here among the staff, because it just got to be the point, I'm the superintendent, should I be spending all this time on the newsletter? People need my time and expertise and a lot of other things. So, this media company, I talked to several of them, and this company supplies us with a writer, and it's, it's, it's a start-to-finish production. So, all the principals and a lot of key activity directors all have the contact information for our writer at Troy Media, and we, we just feed them pictures and bullets and contact information, and so over the course of, you know, the fall, they're collecting information, and then at the end, they have a professional editor do the layout, and then they send us proofs to look at. So, it's systematized, so that, there's, there's more than just printing and postage there. And so, the question is, you know, how valuable is someone's time to do this? But, you know, there it is, just in black and white, what it, what it costs and what we're getting for what we've been spending. We, and you can see, '22, '23, that was COVID year, where we really had, we had extra funds, and that's kicked that up. So, looking around, kind of back to what Mr. Morve had reached out to me about, I did call the IU, because they have a print shop, and their, their prices are actually probably the cheapest in Erie. So, I sent them a sample of what we print typically, and their printer said, okay, well, this is, this is our, our estimate for you. If we did 8,600 copies on 24-pound paper, which is not quite as heavy and glossy as what we're using right now, that's the cost. For a little bit more, you could get something comparable to what you do. Now, the, they, they can't do the folded mailers, though, so, we, this doesn't include posted or postage or production. This is just them dropping off a pallet of printed things somewhere that, that we've already written, put into final polish form, and just sent it to them. So, they, their product would have to be a stapled folded booklet, and those are a little more expensive to mail than the folders that we do that don't have any staples or, like, inserted type sheets. And then at the tech school, I talked with the director there, Mr. LaVerdi, because they, they do have a printing program, and they do some nice stuff. They do a lot of things to highlight what the students do there. But it's a lot of one-off type things that are specific to one event or another. They do have a coloring book, and I've seen this handed out. They do 1,700 copies of this coloring book, and that goes to all third- They do seventeen-hundred copies of this coloring book, and that goes to all third-grade classes in Erie County. And the idea is, third grade is where the first career standards come into play, so to expose kids to possible careers, and they have this nice coloring book. But it was professionally produced, it's outsourced, and their cost, seventeen-hundred copies is forty-seven-hundred. And of course, that's not mailed. The director comes around, and he does, he meets with the students, and he does a good job. So, I mean, that was just a little exploration from today. So just throwing up the two viable things here from some quick research, the complete product with, I went back to Troy Media and said, look, you know, I'm not sure we can continue at the level that we have been. What are some options? So, you know, there's a lot that goes into this type of calculation, but his prices are inclusive of production, and a writer being assigned to the district, and an editor that lays out the issue for us. And then I had specifically asked them, I lose track of time, maybe four or five years ago, to work with Haynes Printing. And Haynes, we do a lot of printing with Haynes, we have over the years, so he works with them, and, you know, between the two of them, I think they give us a pretty good deal. So that's what it is. And then just costing out the I U, just printing it only, and the costs that aren't there would be mailing and postage. Don't have an accurate estimate, you know, I only have so many hours today. And then production time, you know, how many people would have to get into that? People have suggested, hey, why don't we have a student group or something do a newsletter? And, you know, that's always a possibility, but the mission of the newsletter would have to change, because when you get into student publications like that, you can run into equity issues and freedom of speech issues, depending on how tightly it is aligned with your curriculum. And right now, we don't have a journalism curriculum, I don't believe. So you'd have to create a class, you have to create a stipend, and so there has to be a teacher assigned to it. But the mission wouldn't be what it is right now, which is we try to focus on the best of the best and put it out beyond our borders, some of the little bit outreach that we do do. So it would take some more research to go down that road. My personal opinion is, you probably would, you know, you're going to save seven thousand dollars maybe, or ten, depending on what you decide to do or would want to do, but you'd also soak up a lot of someone's time here. And if it's a student newsletter, it's not going to be focused as it is right now, because if you print a story about Club A, you also have to print a story about Club B, and they might be vastly different.
I actually do have a comment about that, because I have actually been in conversation with the principal about the newsletter, because the volleyball team has never been featured. In this last newsletter, every single other fall team was featured. And he said the reason was not purposeful, but he's like, I wrote the articles and they were submitted, and then other people wrote articles, like Mr. Corey wrote an article, and somebody else wrote an article, and somebody else, so like, they just got excluded again. But there was one, there were a couple other things I was disappointed with, like an entire page of a field trip to Mercyhurst, which was just a bunch of kids standing there looking up at the ceiling. I'm like, why do we have an entire page for this one thing?
Sure. Well, and that's why we're having the discussion. At the end of the day, it's subject to what's happening on any given cycle, and, you know, people that will engage with the writer and want to provide their news.
I guess I.
And there's a certain, we try to be balanced, and that's a lot of the reason we went to eight pages, because people are sending all this stuff, and like, how do you choose? So everything that's getting sent to us is pretty much getting printed. Now that you say this, I don't know if the volleyball team is in this issue or not, but they haven't.
It was the fall, like around fall time, so it would have been in that issue.
I don't.
But when you feature every single other sport and not them, it does feel exclusive.
Yeah, and I see your point agree. Certainly not intentional.
I guess I'm interested in the rest of the Board's comments, and let me just frame, I guess I look at this topic a couple of different ways. One is, do we think it's important that we do this kind of outreach and communication with our community at all? Because one option could be, we just don't do it, and we save ourselves some level of money, depending on which way we look at it. I guess another way of looking at it is, are we interested in communicating with our tax base and those that, you know, are contributing to the district? And I understand the zip code saturation, I had asked Mr. Berlin, because I had some relatives that get it, that live in other districts, and they don't have any kids, so that's, they're my parents, they're not sending anybody to our district. So I guess I understand the cost savings of a slightly wider net, but I guess I wonder what the rest of the Board thinks about that, that choice, eighty-six-hundred copies versus four thousand. And then third, you know, I guess I'm interested in what the Board thinks about those cost differences, because what Mr. Berlin, you know, has basically said outright, but when I see cost savings, but I also see like postage, I think could easily get almost all the savings would be gone on the bottom choices. And the second of all, just the time, I don't want our superintendent writing newsletters, no offense, but, you know, as a, I just remember back to when we first moved into the district, not all of us lived out here our whole lives, but some of us moved to the district, and not having children, but being a taxpayer and getting that, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, whenever it was, and looking at it and reading it, and, you know, I didn't notice the volleyball team wasn't mentioned, but I just kind of saw what the district offered, and it was something that I thought about as we started to have children. So I certainly can see benefits even to those that don't currently have children, but maybe someday would.
Well.
Mr. President?
Dr. Pushak.
I would like to speak to a few items. I am one-half mile from Harbor Creek Township, and one-point-two miles from Mill Creek Township, where my parcel is located in Green Township, and I must be in their zip code saturation as well. Mill Creek has a Mill Creek magazine that they give two or three pages to the school district, and it is very high-level, mostly advertisement to come to their school district. Harbor Creek has a, other than orange and black on their cover page, it's almost all black and white, very small print. I do take the time to read it because I have an interest in that, but nothing compared to what we have. We have a professionally-written, professionally-produced, professionally-mailed document that I think our residents deserve. They need to know what's going on. And even, I think it was four years ago, Mr. Berlin wrote an article, why are my taxes going up? And he was able to communicate that in detail. And he used his superintendent's message to help the community understand the taxing structure in Pennsylvania. I am not a fan of having students or teachers or even I Us or tech people taking care of our stuff for us. Maybe for other items that may be appropriate, this one time, three times a year that we send this out, it needs to be professional, great-looking, people can say, hey, they take the time to put together this nice item. I'm in favor of eight pages. I think in a thirty-plus-million-dollar budget, thirty thousand is worth it as one of the only items that we provide. Not everyone has children, not everyone views our website, not everyone goes past the sign at the end of our driveway. I'm in favor of the three times a year, eight pages each. We are very good stewards of our tax dollars, but I think this would not be the place to cut. Thank you.
Mr. Young, did you have something?
Sure. No, I just want to say purely from the exercise of looking at the financial perspective and comparing it against other options, I publish a magazine quarterly, and I need to know who your vendors are, because these are excellent prices, especially, I mean, bulk mailing is something that's not easily replicated unless you're using a contracted source that does that third-party service for multiple organizations. And you couldn't even come close to purchasing a one-quarter F T E to take care of this internally if you didn't have that outside publisher, I mean, not even close. And I figure I use about three-eighths of a full-time employee to do four publications a year, so you'd need a quarter. And, you know, and so number one, it's excellent cost perspective, even though those look like big numbers, right? But the zip code saturation, I'll just echo the comments already, I mean, we get this at my office in Summit Township. I have employees that read my mail on the way to my office. That's supposed to be funny. They're not supposed to do that, but they read my mail on the way to my office and say, hey, look at this really great thing that happened in your school district, knowing that I live here and serve here as well. So that means that that message is getting to people even beyond that zip code saturation, because they are in other neighboring regions. So I just feel it's needed, being that I do have experience in publishing a quarterly magazine. This is an excellent use of resource, very impressed with the product, and I think most of the residents that I've ever engaged have all commented the same, so just want to note that.
I'd like to clarify, I'm not against the newsletter at all, I think it's great. I just maybe would request an extra love layer of editing.
Mr. President, I'll just camp on to those conversations. I certainly think that, yes, the newsletter is very well-done, it has very intense levels of information, maybe not all of the levels of information that, you know, everybody wants, but as Dr. Berlin has indicated, it's kind of a sifting process. My question, I guess I would, so I'm very much in favor, as Dr. Pushak is, you know, keeping it with the multi-pages, the multi-issues during the course of the year, and keeping it done, you know, via the professional service that we have now. The question I guess I have would be is, do they do a web portion of that? In other words, do they allow this newsletter either to be posted to the website? And/or if there's information that doesn't make it to the newsletter, can it be posted on the website as supplementary information somehow, as a link of some kind, so that we have two tracks? We have a physical piece that gets mailed, but we also have an electronic piece that can be viewed electronically. And I don't know if Troy Media would do that. I would certainly think that publishing slash, you know, companies like that would have a branch that would allow a web, you know, presence. Is that a fair question to ask?
Yeah.
We do the same thing, PDF.
And I don't think it's done now, am I correct? I don't think the newsletter is actually electronically viewable on our website, I don't think that's.
It is.
Is it? Okay. So that's there?
Yeah, it's right on the landing page.
Yeah.
Or is that? Right on the landing page.
I don't know if the latest issue, after a few months.
It may lag, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Mr. President, didn't we at one time also encourage residents, if they wanted it electronically, they could choose to have it delivered?
Yeah, we had, we had a signup for electronic distribution, and it was included in the newsletter, if you want electronic distribution, here's the website that you go to, and you filled out a form, and then that would come to us, and we'd take them off the mailing list, and then there was an electronic distribution list. It grew over a four-year period, I'm trying to remember, maybe to thirty-five people. It just didn't really gain much traction. And I think it's social media that you get more out of that. We could certainly be more forward with our social media presence in the newsletter. Although we do have, I think, a pretty decent system for social media, we have designated posters in each building, you know, so people know, hey, if you're doing something pretty good, let Mr. Smith or Mrs. Jones know, and they'll get it up on the Facebook page for you.
I don't know if any other board members had any comments. I guess I just, all the positive comments, you know, are absorbing, it makes a lot of sense. Mr. Young, Dr. Pushak, and Mr. Morve, I didn't get, were you saying you think it is wise to go ahead and keep with the zip code saturation, or do you think we should?
Hundred percent.
You do?
Hundred percent.
Just want to clarify that, same?
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
So, and these are the four-page, back to four pages like we used to do. Eight pages runs closer, a little over thirty thousand, I think, somewhere in that neighborhood. So.
Well, and then maybe that's where. I'm saying, you know, if the web edition has those additional four pages to it, because if they couldn't fit eight pages worth of documentation into a four-page issue, well, then there's supplementary information that shows up via the web. Just a, it's a thought, and how that could be distributed.
And are you volunteering to pick what goes in and what comes out?
With Mrs. Heatherington.
No, I'm just kidding, but point well taken.
I would like to compliment the superintendent on the extra research he did to bring this, these alternatives for us to discuss, but I think the Board is wise to swing back around to continue what we're doing, and it's a beautiful, beautiful product.
Agreed. Got what you need for that?
So, yeah.
Yes, some clarity.
Four pages, eight pages?
I think, what I'm hearing, we want to go to keep with what we have, but we just keep the eight pages and keep the distribution as is, and keep it with Kidder Media. What's the difference between Kidder Media and Troy?
It's, well, it's, his name is Kidder Troy, so he has different logos, yeah.
Gotcha, gotcha. All right.
The other item I wanted to discuss a little bit is our P S B A delegate. So Mr. Jesse Williams had reached out and said, hopefully you all saw that in a previous email from Dr. Berlin, the P S B A that did our training at the beginning of our year this year, and provides lots of support to the Board, has a delegate meeting in November of twenty-four, and Mr. Williams said he'd be willing to be our delegate. To my knowledge, this doesn't happen that often, or these kinds of meetings, so I just wanted to make sure, we talked about it a little bit, anybody else have any interest? And this might be in-person if possible, I think, do you remember what I said, Mr. Williams, like first hundred and twenty or something that signed up, and then something like that?
Hundred and twenty-five, the first hundred and twenty-five.
And then if not, it'd be online, so just wanted to throw it out there, if anybody else had an interest as well.
Mr. President, I'm in full support of Mr. Williams representing this Board as the P S B A delegate.
If it wasn't him, I was going to nominate Mr. Morve.
All right. We vote next week.
Yes, I'm not going to do it all in favor. All right, sounds good. So those items under miscellaneous will be on our agenda next week for consideration. Will we have an Erie County Technical School report next week, Mr. Morve?
Yes, Mr. President, that will be a report of the April Joint Commission Meeting of the Tech School next week.
Thank you. And for the Northwest Intermediate Unit, Dr. Pushak, will you have a report?
We will have a report, and I just wanted to mention, I do serve on the Erie County Technical School Perkins Fund Advisory Group as a parent and institution of higher ed employee, and we're having a meeting on Friday to review that. It's, I think it happens twice a year, in order to gain Perkins funding, you have to have an advisory group and review the information with them. Last time I gave it all to Mr. Morve when I came back, and I plan to do the same.
Great.
Thank you, Dr. Pushak.
My pleasure. Thank you. That brings us to Board Correspondents on Dialogue. Anything from the Board this evening? Hearing done, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Pushak.
Second, you're.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned.